This conference will now be recorded.
Sorry about that. There are eight buses that can queue up to the front. There are two, the diagonal parking bays over on the right hand or eastern side of the plan for pre-K and K drop.
Am I the only one that's losing his audio? I can't hear him either.
Small parking lot that's up to the very north side, which will serve a different importance.
Eric, this is Trevor. We lost you there for a little bit.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just move back a little bit. I'm not sure where you left off, but go back about.
Okay, the buses, I was showing that there's car drop off for students on this outer loop to the right, to the east, and then the bus path is through the center of the site where it's one-way traffic to maintain safety for the buses. We can queue eight buses there. We then have the diagonal parking spaces, which are for the parents who need to park and escort their children into the building due to their age. And then the center parking lots are for visitors, administration, teachers, et cetera. There is also a northern parking lot, which is either overflow or can be assigned as the school department sees fit. We've tried to make it as flexible as possible so that the school system can manage it effectively. And then we've made the interconnectivity a bit and minimize any trips. There is also a fire lane, which may be spoken about in a little bit about when we talk about the playgrounds. It's been kind of integrated into the play areas, but it was a request of the fire chief and gardener to have a full fire lane out back. So they got creative to kind of incorporate it into the play areas, but still maintain that emergency vehicle access. We did do a traffic study in 2019. If you could go to the next page, Victoria. And so the outcome of the traffic study showed, of course, that the travel speeds on Pearl Street were above what was originally posted there. And so recommendations that came out of the traffic study were that we make this a school zone, so it'll be helped to decrease speeds and we'll sign it appropriately. We are adding a left-bound turn lane heading eastbound on Pearl Street, so that flu through traffic can continue while there's a queue up to turn left into the school driveway. We're also relocating the crosswalk in order to increase the safety and lineup with the Dunn Pond. So we're putting the crosswalk now on the easterly side of the driveway. There will also be a rapid flashing beacon to warn people that there is a pedestrian crossing at that location. There is also sort of a separation lane or a gore area. That's just imprint in the asphalt to help give sort of an area refuse or shorten the distance that people have to walk across the crosswalk. The last item that we're proposing is we're going to be proposing to remove some of these trees along the frontage here, which are not high-quality trees. There are a lot of eastern white pines and they're very, they're almost into the right-of-way, and they affect the sightlines. So we will be trying to remove those to include, to increase vehicular safety in the area. I will also note that the majority of these improvements are paintings and markings, and that the right-of-way on Pearl Street is actually wide enough, and the paved width is wide enough right now to incorporate the turn lanes. So we don't have major construction down on Pearl Street to facilitate the school system. The stormwater, this is a brief overview of what happens with stormwater. I'd just like to bring you folks up to speed a little bit.
Eric, we lost you after stormwater.
I don't think.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Yeah.
Yep. You dropped at stormwater.
Turn your computer mic off.
Oh my gosh.
Are you still on it?
Yeah, that shouldn't have turned off. We're sorry.
Eric and Victoria, we can hear you.
We can hear.
Okay. I apologize. So quickly, just to run through what the stormwater was, was that, and I guess we've lost our screen for a second.
Oh, that's gracious.
Okay, you got two hot mics going, and that's why the echo.
Yeah, we shot up the mic.
Okay. And the PowerPoint is back.
Yeah. So just briefly.
Thanks, everybody, for having me. I guess I'll jump into landscape. I couldn't hear the last bit by Eric. I'm not sure everybody else could, but. Whoops. Just hold for a minute. Victoria, could you back up to the plan? I think it's two slides back.
There we go.
Okay, great. Well, thanks again for having Brian Obara and I. I wanted to talk a little bit about the first, the site organization, which Margo and Eric have pointed out. But basically.
Please identify yourself.
Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Sarah Lawrence from Stimson.
Thanks, Sarah.
The organization of the site basically keeps all of the vehicular circulation and the paving for the parking lots on the west side of the site while preserving the east side of the site for play and outdoor learning. We really worked hard with the planting in order to try to limit the impact of the sort of effect of the paving of the parking lots for the students both arriving by car and then also at the entryways while they're waiting to be picked up or waiting for the buses. So we did a lot of planting and vegetated strips surrounding the parking, within the parking, and then also outside of the service, both south of the service drive, screening the service from the main entry and also to the garden north of that, which we call the Summit Garden. There's planted berms both on the west and east side of the pre-K, K building, which is the C building, which is the furthest to the south, which really insulates that area from any kind of visual or impact from the vehicular circulation. So really, at the start of the project, we did research on education and the impact that exposure to nature has on students even just visually for focus and productivity. And here, once the students enter from the west and exit to the east for play and outdoor learning, they'll really be immersed in natural playscapes, planting, and also the existing woodland, which wraps the site, which we've tried to preserve as much as possible. I'll talk briefly about the different play areas. And I don't know if Victoria can maybe circle with the cursor while I'm talking. Well, actually, if you just stay on the plan for a moment. The pre-K area, which is right outside of the C wing, has poured-in-place rubber surfacing, a little tri-clue. It's got play equipment sized for the smaller students, as well as ADA accessible play equipment, and a little lawn area and a small water feature. As you move north, there's a basketball court. And then north of that, there's a large paved terrace with concrete unit pavers, which will be great for gathering in all seasons since it'll be able to be plowed. And then across that is the play area we call the hemlock bowl. In the orange, you'll see that's poured-in-place rubber surfacing as well. And that's really the upper level of topography for this garden play space. As you move farther to the northeast, you actually go down about nine feet, in which we have a hillside, two hillside hill slope slides that take you down that topography with climbing boulders and an ADA path that also wraps around. As you move north along the fire lane, there's a play area with using existing play equipment from Elm Street. And then at the top of the paper, there's an area called the oak knoll, which really is a, it's a large, drawn as large enough for two large play fields of outdoor lawn space and a ton of swings. There's like, I think there's 18 seats there. And really, this area is characterized by the knoll on the edge, which we've really tried to preserve, both for interest, for topography, but also to try to preserve the oak forest, the red oak forest that is there. We've drawn a small woodland trail that cuts through that woodland as well and takes you back down to the fire lane. And then finally, for the play areas, there's a garden play space south of the A wing, which is the top building area. And that, this was really conceived as more of a contemplative playground space, whereas the hemlock bowl is a very, and the oak knoll is a very active play space. This area has room for outdoor classroom, raised beds for gardening, some more play features, and a raised overlook deck that is sort of engulfed with native plantings that buffer this space from the parking below. You can go to the next slide. So I just wanted to show you here. Here's a section cut from the cafeteria area and all the way through the upper terrace paved area down to the lower level of the hemlock bowl. And I just wanted you to see how the planting, the really, the play areas are really immersed in planting, and especially the existing woodland all along the edges that we've tried to preserve, both for impact on the students themselves and then also creating a really good buffer for the site, for the site, you know, extents. Below that are some photos of play equipment that are very similar to some of the pieces that we are, that we have designed. Hollowed-out tree logs to climb through, black locust logs for balance beams. There's a picture there of a very similar slide with boulder, with boulder hillside for climbing. And I will say also, we're trying to do a lot of salvaging on the site, which is really exciting because it's kind of taking some of this existing woodland and really using it on the site. So we'll be excavating site boulders and as many large, you know, red oak logs or another oak, you know, species that we'll preserve as well as possible for some of the play area, play sort of retaining edges and balance beams. The image all the way to the right is a black locust climbing structure, and we have proposed a number of these sized to the different areas. There's one for the pre-K K area, which will be much lower and fun for smaller kids. And then in the more sort of intense play with the older kids up near the hemlock bowl, there's a larger one that will, you know, have a little bit more, you know, more fun for the older kids. You can go to the next slide. This is a detail for the sign off of Pearl Street. So it's a cedar wood sign on top of a stacked field stone base and lit from the front by floodlights, but not in between the hours of 11:00 and 7:00. This is a non, this otherwise non-illuminated sign. And if you go to the next slide. As you move further into the site, as you diverge from the main drive and start to enter into the parking area, there's a digital sign here, which is an illuminated sign, which will have static images or static messaging from the school for the student population. And that's about it. We really just wanted to make sure that we're creating a play area that would allow students to really engage with the, you know, the woodland landscape that surrounds the existing site and that kind of take you back a little bit to the woods as they are now. And that's, that's it.
Thanks. Thank you, Seth. I think we're showing the general signage here for information. I think because of the number of signs that we have, we will be looking to get some variances with the building inspector and the zoning board of appeals. We currently are just showing what we have for permitting overview. We are, we filed with the planning board. We're in with the conservation commission and the rest of these permits, and they're all in process currently now, including MEPA ENF and a stormwater permit with NIPTEES. Next slide, please, Victoria. We do have a project schedule here, which I know is awful small, and I may not go into big detail, or I'll ask Margo to fill in if people have questions. But basically, we're looking to get the school out to bid to end of July and early August, start construction in November, October, November of this year, so that it will open in August of 2022. And I think that's it for our presentation, and we turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead, Trevor.
Trevor, Eric, can you, can you go back to the wetlands presentation you're going to do? Can you go back to that slide at all and talk to what you're going to talk to?
Yeah, that's exactly what I was going to ask. If you could backtrack to stormwater, because that's when go-to-meeting blew up on you.
Okay, I apologize again for those difficulties.
It's quite all right.
I actually came into the office to have a better internet connection than my house, but that didn't work so well.
Best laid plans.
Yeah. Victoria, could you blow that up a little bit, if at all, just in the plan? So basically, where the school system sits is at the high point. Where the main entry is, is actually the exact high point of the site, and that's why the school fits so well there. And so the majority of the drainage, you can kind of see it by the amount of colored features we have, sort of heads down the hill to the west, and then some of it does in fact head to the east. And we kind of, we have laid out the drainage system so that we match existing conditions and that we continue to have flow in the resource areas that we currently have now. And so the school does have, we are collecting the roof water, and that roof water is being infiltrated into the ground to meet the EP standards. And these areas in pink are subsurface infiltration areas that are actually underneath the parking lot or the playscape that's in the back. The green, larger areas, there's actually four of them, are detention areas. They're regular open detention basins. They are away from the school, both for safety and because they need to be lower from where the water flows. We do have a couple of rain gardens that are up in the parking lots or the little bioswales, and then some rain gardens that will both enhance for the conservation commission mitigation, but also can be an educational component that the landscape architects have planted very well. And then there is a small replication area, which we're showing in this light green down here because we are crossing one wetland. This is, the one in the center is a wetland, but the two on the perimeter of the roads are brooks that we are crossing. One is an intermittent stream. The other one, Foster Brook, which one's north-south on the westerly side of the property, is a perennial stream. And that's what we're currently in with conservation commission for permitting.
Okay. Thank you for that. I had a question about the access road onto Catherine Street. I'm sorry, did you hear me?
I did.
Okay, no, something. I had a loud noise in my headset. The access road to Catherine Street, is that envisioned to be two-way traffic or one-way, or how will that work? I didn't quite understand.
Yeah, so I should have, I should have mentioned, the roadway is two ways in both directions, both the one to Catherine Street and down to Pearl Street. And it does not have sidewalks on both sides of the roads. On one side of the road, there is a 10-foot-wide multi-use path, which will kind of provide some connectivity from the neighborhoods on Pearl Street and Dunn Park, and then bring you over to the other school system. So both bikers and walkers will walk on the, on the multi-use path, which is separated off the roadway. But the roadway itself is two lanes.
Okay, so hypothetically, a motor vehicle traveling east could take a left on Catherine Street and then a right onto the access road and access the school that way, as well as off the main drive off of Pearl?
That's correct.
Okay. Questions from the board? Go ahead, finish your statement, sir. I talked right over you.
No, it was fine. I was just going to say, most of the traffic we foresee there will be parents who have kids at multiple schools. We envision most of the direct drop-off traffic coming from Pearl Street.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We have exceeded the half hour that we allotted for the public hearing, a public meeting, I mean, sorry. So just to let the people know that are on the, the meeting, go-to-meeting and calling in, we will be starting a planning board meeting a little late, the actual meeting itself. We're still in the public meeting.
Other questions or comments from board members? Mr. Chairman? Yes? Steve, former, an explanation of the road that goes around the backside of the school, the access road, the emergency road that actually goes through the play areas? If that could be described a little bit more, if you would, at this time, I'd like to hear that.
Yeah, sure. So I'll move back. Victoria, you could move back to a site plan. But basically, it comes off the easterly section where the pre-K is. Hopefully, you'll see in a second where. So here's where it enters. And for two small sections, it's 14 feet wide. But then in other play areas, it widens out to 20 feet, which meets the fire lane access. The building code requires a certain percentage of the building perimeter to have access. It doesn't actually require full access. But then we continued it, and we just lost the line, but we continued it all the way around the northerly A wing, and then it connects back up to the parking lot. And it'll be gated so that if that truly is, and we'll have a Knox box, so the fire department and emergency services can access it when necessary. But it will not allow any traffic through it. There'll be a mountable curb at both sides of it to visually detract people from thinking that it's part of the roadway system.
With the question, delivery to the school, is that going to be done from the front, or is that through the access roads in the back, normal deliveries?
Yeah, that's actually a great question. So we did our best, and I guess maybe we either made it inconspicuous, and hopefully it will be that way on the site when it's done, because it is right out in front. You can see where we put the X there. There's actually a, we're going to run the sidewalk right through it, and then we'll make it a little bit less conspicuous. So during off-hours and midday, trucks will be able to back down into a loading dock, and there'll be three loading docks in that vicinity. One will be for dumpster for regular garbage, another one will be for recyclables, and then there'll be an open dock for food deliveries and other miscellaneous deliveries. There's also a little extension there and two little dots you can see, which is an emergency backup generator and the transformer for the project. But we did try to heavily screen it and kind of tuck it into a nook, because it needs to be on that front side of the building for safe access.
Thank you. One last question at this time. I noticed that there's a chain-link fence the whole length of the school along the access road going out to Catherine Street. Is there any type of a chain-link fence to the east side of the school section?
Yeah, we have chain-link fence pretty much full perimeter of the school. It is on both the access driveways, because many of them are going to be raised because of the, we're crossing those brooks, and so there are retaining walls. And so from a safety perspective, even when people are walking up the driveway, we wanted to have the chain-link fence there. And then the school system has asked for a chain-link fence around the back, including around the back of the play areas, and then coming almost around the whole school. So we will have perimeter fence for safety purposes.
And for wetlands, I understand, too, to keep everybody on the driveways, if you would.
Yeah, I guess. The commission hasn't specifically asked, but it is nice to protect them from vehicles and people.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You're very welcome. Anything else from board members? Okay, comments from staff?
Yeah, if I may, it's Chris Coughlin here.
Go ahead, Mr. Coughlin.
Thank you. Eric, could you, could you speak a little bit about the site lighting leading up to, along the access drive? along the access drive? What your visions are for that?
Sure, and I may ask Sarah to jump in, because we do have site lighting on both of the access drives, and I'm forgetting right now what the height of the poles are, and they did choose an architectural type that Sarah was involved in, Sarah, I don't know if you can unmute and answer that question off the top of your head.
You know, I have to ask Brian for that.
Yeah, hi, this is Brian, so along, along the access roadway and the parking area, we do have a pole height of twenty feet, the, the lights do, are dark sky compliant, they don't emit light upwards, and then we do have limited illumination in the play area, just enough for security, we don't anticipate active use of the play areas east of the building, and so that lighting is a little bit lowered at an eighteen-foot height, and is, is really just enough to illuminate the fire lane in the evening hours.
That's great, thanks, so, is, for utilities, electric, is the intention to go underground with electric on the main drive off of Pearl, and there'll be standalone streetlights?
Yeah, the current proposal, and there, there is some negotiation going on right now, because the, they may look to do some redundancy down to the high school, so we may continue the duck bank down the access road, the access drive through, to the middle school and the high school, we are bringing conduits down there for internet and for other communications, and then there's also a water line, the water line does loop, you know, our main connection is in Pearl Street, but it'll connect down at the high school also, so that is, is part of the drive, and that's, the current plan for electric is to just come up to the transformer, but we've recently heard from the electric company that they would like to participate, so we're checking the map to make sure we take advantage of the best situation.
Perfect, thanks so much, that's all.
Anything from you, Trevor?
I'm also at this point, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, at this point, we're going to open it to members of the public, and here's how we're gonna do it, because we're doing this digitally, if you would like to be heard in favor of this plan, enter your name in the chat, which is that small balloon up on the right-hand side, and enter your name and send it to me, and I'll call on you in the order received. Is there anyone here wishing to be heard in favor of this plan? Is there anyone here wishing to be heard in favor of this plan? Third time, is there anyone here wishing to be heard in favor of this plan? Hearing none, anyone on the phone wishing to be heard in favor of this plan? Exclusively on the telephone? Anyone exclusively on the telephone wishing to be heard in favor of this plan? Anyone on the telephone wishing to be heard in favor of this plan? Hearing none, back to chat, is there anyone here wishing to be heard in opposition to this plan, or if you have a specific question, enter your name, send it to me? Mr. Stephen Rockwood, chair recognizes you, enter your street address, please, go ahead and unmute, and...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Stephen Rockwood, 310 Pearl Street.
All right, sir.
I was somewhat surprised by the selection of the Pearl Street site for the new elementary school in the spring of 2019, however, as I looked deeper at the project as a whole, I came to generally support the site and the project. I did have concerns at that time, some of which have been answered, or may be answered as the detailed plan comes together going forward, and I've seen some progress on some of these things. My property, that's the proposed school property along several boundary legs, for a length of some eight hundred and fifty feet. The notice of intent submitted to the Conservation Commission is one thousand eighteen pages. As I was looking at that, I note that some of the diagram and map pages are not fully viewable in the document as accessed. With the length and breadth of this document, and the sub-plans provided to various boards and commissions, can this board and staff be expected to review and properly process the entire filing and its ramifications, given the area impacted? Given the complexity of the site and the area impacted, it would seem that an appropriate independent engineering peer review would be in order. In addition, another set of eyes, such as a peer reviewer, can independently note items that the project team may not have seen. Projects are often improved and resources better utilized or protected as a result of the peer review process. When I first learned of the site, the first thing that came to mind, when looking at the plan, was the location of the access road to the site from Pearl Street. If I could ask Victoria to put up the Pearl Street access road intersection, just so everyone can sort of see what I'm talking about. Here we go, at the proposed location, what they're calling the existing logging road, which is quite close to 300 Pearl Street, and pretty much directly across from the Dunn's Park entrance, I fear for the westbound traffic on Pearl Street. The line of sight for this westbound traffic would be limited by the curve in the topography. The, the eastward line of sight for stop traffic waiting at the intersection to pull out onto Pearl Street in either direction would be similarly limited. As we all know, school buses are not the most agile or quick vehicles. I spoke of this concern at the city council public hearing in early May of 2019, with this issue being my primary concern. I have since spoken twice with the Traffic Commission, and once with the School Building Committee. In the fourteen months since this was first announced, I've seen many live presentations and updates of the plan, but remain somewhat disappointed that this real concern has not been addressed. I have lived at 310 Pearl Street all of my life, that's sixty years now, and offer some of the following thoughts. The school access road location sits on State Highway Route 101, just west of a curve with a radius of nine hundred seventy feet, with a limited westbound line of sight. This is also downhill, a downhill section going west. Fully one-quarter to one-third of this westbound traffic travels on or over the breakdown lane, the delineation line, further impairing the westbound line of sight. Having lived here so long, I know that my neighbors at 300 Pearl Street have always had a difficult time getting out of their driveway due to this limitation on site. I, I have seen the traffic study that was done, and if I recall properly, the average speed in one direction was forty-six miles an hour, and in the other was forty-three miles an hour, the posted speed limit in this area is thirty miles per hour. With this same thirty mile an hour posting, I have observed the local police officers monitoring traffic in the area somewhat frequently, especially in, in the last year. In clear view of the traffic moving on Pearl Street, both eastbound and westbound, the officers are making traffic stops. These are not hidden speed traffic or anything, just plain sight stops from officers sitting there on the, on the road. I assume that the officers are not stopping vehicles moving in excess of thirty, thirty-three, thirty-five miles an hour, but rather the stops are for vehicles moving in excess of forty. An electronic speed board has been present at that entrance site for pretty much most of the year. I've been told that the engineers are so much smarter than me by someone who regularly attends the meetings of this board. I concur that the engineers are knowledgeable people, and I understand that they will do what they believe is required of them to meet the applicable statutory and regulatory obligations and requirements. That said, the primary objective of the product management firm, the architect and engineering firm, would be to get this school permitted and constructed. They need to be working for the city as a whole, and not just the school building committee. I expect if they put their collective minds to this concern, they can arrive at a good and safe solution. Another concern that I had addressed previously was the power lines. The central wing of the building looks to sit upon the former power line right of way. The power lines through here were first mentioned in 1913, and clearly in place before 1927. Power companies, National Grid, Mass Electric, and predecessor companies have sprayed herbicides through there. The power line here was abandoned and removed in the early nineties, growth such as it is along this line has just started to recover in the past couple of years. I would question what was sprayed between 1913, 1927, and 1992? How did the herbicides break down, and over what period? The high spot along the power line right of way is what is gonna be topped, lowering it by ten to fifteen feet. What impact will this earthwork have upon the residual chemicals in the soil? What chemicals will become airborne as a result? What chemicals will now be re-exposed to surface water resources, including the local surface wells, streams, stump pond, Dunn's Pond, the Otter River, and so forth? And one last point of information, there is a rustic fieldstone cellar hole back behind 330 and 340 Pearl Street, near a marked potential vernal pool. Likely this is behind the seventeen-acre property that was purchased, but it appears to be within the footprint of the school site. Can this be referred to the Gardener Historical Commission for research before the project breaks ground? Thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman and, and board.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that wishes to be heard in opposition to this plan? Is there anyone else here who wishes to be heard in opposition to this plan? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Thank you. All right, now we'll transition into the regular planning board meeting for June. First item of business, meeting minutes from April 28th, which was the public hearing and informational meeting, about site plan mod and drive-through special permit for Timpani Crossroads. I'll entertain a motion? Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, we accept the minutes as presented. Motion made to accept the meeting minutes as presented, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passed. Next is the regular meeting from May 14th, approval of the meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept the meeting minutes of May 14th.
Motion made? Do I have a second? Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. New business, the elementary school project site plan approval, that we just heard of this evening, from our presenters, is there any discussion amongst the board? Thoughts? Now, there are some things up in the air about this, what's going on with the Conservation Commission, Trevor? Can you speak to that? Need to unmute yourself.
Yeah, so they're in front of the Conservation Commission right now, and the Conservation Commission has actually requested a peer reviewer for the wetlands impacts and drainage through construction, and I've had initial talks with the school committee, I want to be on the phone with them tomorrow, the work includes reviewing of all the documents, construction at this onsite overview of construction, I think there's eight visits to the site that they're, that they're requesting, and so I think that addresses Mr., the first comment that Mr. Rockwood made, there will be a peer reviewer on the site on behalf of the ConCon, but they're still in front of them, and actually, I don't know if Eric's still, and Eric might be able to talk a little more about that.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, we did file at the beginning of April with Conservation Commission, we've had two hearings plus a site walk out in the field, we believe we'll have comments from the peer reviewer in the next week or two, and we anticipate working through one or two more hearings, and working to try to get our permits all in line for the, for the middle to the end of July.
Okay. And I understand, did I hear correctly that signage isn't, is non-conforming at this time?
Yes, I think we discussed that we couldn't get a waiver from the site, from the planning board for that, so the architects, I believe, are in discussions with the building commissioner about the variance process for getting the signs, and we, they'd like to have three directional signs, one at the bottom of the two driveways, and then one sort of mid-site, you know, announcing the sign, and then frequently, they also like to put a building sign right on the building to identify it, because of the distances, so I think we both have the number, and then because of the number of signs, we're over the square footage, so we will be filing that as appropriate.
Okay. Board members, questions, comments, discussion? Chairman? This is Mr. Cormier. Question on, Mr. Rockwood had mentioned on the traffic study that was done with the corner that he has, that's very close to his home, has that been addressed by the Traffic Commission? Maybe Chris could fill us in, or Trevor?
I don't, I don't think we, Traffic Commission, what was the issue? I don't, I don't...
I believe it was the site, it's coming down Pearl Street heading west, as you come in, the corner, it's a sweeping corner, nine hundred and some odd feet diameter, and it's a blind drive as you're coming onto the entrance going into the school, that was one, one concern that he had.
Yeah, I don't think that's anything the Traffic Commission can, can take care of, I mean, address, that's something the project engineer is gonna address, it sounds like they're doing some tree cutting along there, and might not be on Mr. Rockwood's side, but that's something the project engineers are gonna have to address, I'm not sure what the Traffic Commission could do there.
Okay. Anything else from the board?
I'm not gonna say anything, I'm quite familiar with the project anyway, so I have no questions or concerns.
Okay, Barbara, Paul? Okay, Barbara Paul. Alright gentlemen, uh, we have the option tonight to vote on site plan approval. I would strongly recommend with conditions, if, uh, any of you intend on making a motion to that effect.
I would suggest that we hold off till the next meeting in case we get some more input. From, uh, citizens of the Gargov City.
You all concur? I tend to agree myself, um. I'm not, I'm not concerned with what's going on with the Conservation Commission, that, that will grind its way through their process in due course. Nor am I worried about the signage, the traffic is kind of a head scratcher though. All right.
And I'll make a motion that we postpone. The, the acceptance of the elementary school project until the next meeting.
Mr. Borogad.
Mr. Chairman, um. Well, maybe we can give the engineers some guidance on as far as what the concerns are for the traffic. Um, what to address maybe at the next meeting coming up if we're holding off for another meeting. Um, they might want to have a little bit of guidance as to what they need to address for the next meeting.
Am I allowed, am I allowed to speak during this section? And maybe I didn't do a good, good enough job explaining what the traffic study entailed, so we were engaged to study. Intersections around the whole area, um, you know, I think we counted over twenty intersections and did the counts there. We did a thorough review of all the sightline profiles in accordance with all mass DOT standards. I think the issues that Mr. Rockwood brought up are, are in fact true. Mostly because the people traveling on that road are above that design speed, um, for that roadway. Uh, I think we found that some of the average speeds were in significant ex, act, excess of. The roadway, I'm not sure if DPW can opine on this, but they obviously put the sign up. Warning people and the creation of the school zone will help to identify with the flashing beacons will help to identify the area and. To slow the traffic down, and so as the, as the plan is laid out now, it does meet. Uh, DOT conformance for, uh, the posted speeds and for the curvature, both vertical and horizontal. Um, and we have added, you know, the safety improvements for the pedestrians. Uh, to get them safely across the road, much safer than they are now. Um, and we've added the ra, rapid flashing beacon, um, for that, so I can have a specific traffic engineer that worked on that. Come address some of the traffic counts if that's, uh, what people would like to hear, but I think as Trevor mentioned, it would be good to have. A little bit more of the background, um, of that information.
I, it sounds like it's, it's more a concern about, um. Speed than anything, and that kind of boils down to, uh, local enfor, and I'm speaking to the board members. That kind of boils down to local enforcement, don't you think?
I can add a little to that, Mr. Chairman, uh. The chief of police was with me during one of my presentations and the outreach. Of presenting the school project to the public. And that was a, a question that did come up in one of the meetings. And he realizes. That th- there's a great deal of speeding down that road. Again, it's already been addressed that the school district is going to be, uh. Instituted in that part of, part of the road. And he also emphasized additional patrolling of what she is already doing. And when the, uh, I guess when the earth turns on the school project. Uh, more patrolling will come about from the, from the police department. That, that's what he conveyed at these meetings. So I think it's being addressed. It just, that Mr. Rockwood doesn't see that now, although he does see some patrolling, but it will be. There'll be more emphasis in that, in that sector, uh, when the school gets in process. Thank you.
Well, in light of that, uh, do we want to continue to hold this for next month, or, uh, how do you gentlemen feel now? Does that opinion still stand? It's what, what the board decides.
Again, in the long term, I, I still think, yeah. Uh, it would be a good idea to wait, uh, until next month. Again, my opinion. And I already made the motion. If you, if you need to, I'll withdraw it.
Well, if we don't have, um. If, if we don't have a, a punch list of specifics for, uh, the project engineers to address. You know, uh. What are we holding it for? I, I'm, that I'm not clear on.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cormier.
I believe that the, uh, line of sight issue is what question is coming around the corner. But apparently if the speed is, uh, slowed down to the thirty miles an hour or where it's supposed to be. That the line of sight must apparently, uh, be approved as far as getting in and out of that, uh, area. I know that three hundred Pearl Street, uh, has always been a tough area to try to pull out of, it's just that they come around that corner as they do. So that would be just that one item, I guess, is what the biggest thing. Uh, the other issue is that, uh, we haven't noticed that the historical and architect, uh, archaeological resources. They've been tested, uh, checked and there's nothing in the city, and he brings up a footprint of an old. Uh, cellar hole that's up in the back, whether or not that's ever been addressed, I don't know of that.
I, I can't speak to that, I'm. Not aware of it.
I, I can speak to that if you'd like.
Ms. Jones, please.
Yes, we submitted, uh, information to the Massachusetts Historical Commission. About the, uh, site and the building and the project, uh, we also went to the Gardner Historical Commission. And now we have an official letter from Mass Historic saying they have no concerns. About, about using this site for the school.
Thank you. Does that, that, uh, satisfy your question, Mr. Cormier?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay, so that brings us back to traffic. Does, uh, your motion still stand, Mr. Schwartz?
I withdraw my motion.
Mr. Chairman. Just about to make a mo. I make a motion, we accept the plan as it presented. With the stipulations that they check into the. Situations that were brought up tonight.
Which situations?
The traffic.
Mr. Borogad.
Uh, just to clarify, Mr. Bitez's, um, motion, I, um, I. My opinion that the traffic has been addressed. Um, based on the conversation in the board and the engineers. Um, so I think Bob, if you're gonna, if we're gonna put something in there for traffic, we need to be more like specific. What, what they need to address, so if you're still unsatisfied with the answers that you get tonight. Um, I will, I will recommend that the board, if you do make the motion to accept the plan tonight, that we do. Place conditions, um, on it for conservation approvals. Uh, and he's owning Board of Appeals approvals in all, um, state, uh, approvals. As part of the, um, site plan approval.
That makes sense to me, I make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second, seconded by Mr. Schwartz. Motion made and seconded to accept the site plan with conditions based on Conservation Commission, ZBA. And state approvals. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passed. Next item of business, uh, three dot one, Bailey Brook Leo Drive Open Space and Recreation Project.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman and the committee.
Thank you, good evening.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to update the board, I'm just, um, getting my screen prepared.
Yeah, I could tell.
On this project. So. Can everybody see the screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Um.
Yeah, I can.
So, the point of this tonight, I wanted to keep this on the agenda for the, this evening, because I know there was some comments. At the last planning board meeting about the, um, the initial concept plan, um. And so, after the drawing board, we did, um, address some of the issues of, uh, comments and concerns. Um, we, as you can see, we, um. We eliminated the roadway along the eastern portion of the fields. Um, along with the parking that we had there, which I think was about sixty-sixty-five parking spaces. Um, which increases the buffer from the rear properties of the Leo Drive residents. Um, to a hundred feet, over a hundred feet to the fields. So eighty feet to that, uh, accessible gravel, uh, trail. Right here, um. We actually added a multi-sport court, which, um, you can, you know, it's for tennis, um, basketball. Whatever, uh, the wants are, and I mean, it could be just a basketball court, it could be just a tennis court. Whatever the city, um, and residents want there. Um, we had to shift the play area over to the north somewhat. We eliminated small, uh, recreation field in this area. It's going to remain open space recreation area for, um, in its natural state and or if something else is proposed there. I know there was mention of potential bog park at the last meeting or, um, or again, it could just remain what it is. Um, we. Uh. We are going to include. A berm along the east side of the accessible walkway. A four to five foot berm, vegetated berm, um, which will increase. The, um, the barrier from the residential area. Um, please note that the field is proposed to be about five feet below. The, um, accessible trail. And with the five foot berm, that's a good ten feet. You know, below grade. Um. And I think that's about it, so this, I just want to, again, um, the board voted to support the original concept. Uh, we've reduced the scope somewhat based on some of the comments that were made at the last meeting. And, um, I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention, right? Uh, we'll be posting this information on our website, um. In the next, hopefully next couple of days, once that berm gets placed on the plan. Um, still waiting for the final to get back from the engineer. Um, and construction plans and specs will be completed, um, by the end of next week.
Okay.
Placing them on the website also.
Now, this, um, this modification, this, this is considered the phase one.
This is, no, this right here is a concept plan, so phase.
Concept plan, excuse me.
Yeah, so phase one is basically the gravel road. And a s, um, portion of this, maybe a third or so of this parking area, gravel parking area. To be built in, and then the. Let's see if I can get up to the, um. The, um. Accessible trail will be built and there's an extensive trail system within the site, there's a. A one-mile loop trail that will be constructed and then we'll be improving the existing trails on the site. That's phase one, um, there'll be about, uh, I think, uh, space for about twenty to thirty vehicles. In the first phase, uh, for access to the trailheads. Um, and that's, that's, that's about all that's going to take place on the one. And then further phases will be determined by the city, um, as they move forward, if anything else is built out on the site.
And assuming, assuming there's, uh, funding for future, uh, subsequent phases and the appetite for them. Uh, will, in the city, each one of those phases would go through, uh, an identical review, public hearing. Et cetera, et cetera, is that correct?
There'll be public meetings associated with it, because there'll have to be, uh, um, you know, funding appropriated through the city council. For any, uh, grant and approval of the grant submissions to the state, so, um. The park rate is what we use for recreation projects typically in as a seventy-thirty split. The city would have to cover the thirty percent match, so anything further on this, done on the site will have to be approved by the city. Um, in order to submit for funding and also, uh, come up with the match money.
Okay, understood, I just wanted to make sure that was, uh, my understanding. Very good, uh, any questions? Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, just one other thing, for phase one, uh, we're looking at probably, uh, going out to bid, uh, sometime this fall. It will come back, I think it will come back to the planning board for site plan approval, um, in a, in a month or so. Uh, because it does create more than, uh, it does trigger the site plan approval process, so it's in the parking spaces. Um, and so there will be, uh, another meeting then.
Any questions from, uh, the board members before we move on? Hearing none.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
How many parking spaces are they going into phase one? Uh, right now?
Uh, phase one will be, I think it's like, it's, I, I think it's twenty, but I want to say twenty to thirty. No, no more than that, um, it's just basically, it's a small cutout of what you had see here, it's. No, I don't, I don't even think it's half of that area, yeah, it's, it's, I don't have a sketch of it. For you, but I can provide, I can send one to you tomorrow. I do have it at, at work.
Thank you.
Very good. Next meeting, Tuesday, July fourteenth at seven PM, next regular meeting. Everyone good with that?
Yep, I'm, I'm okay with it. On my calendar already.
Okay, here.
And make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passed, thank you everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Art, Trevor, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Good night, everyone, thanks.